Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 10th, 2022 Monthly Meeting of the Henrico County School Board. Colleagues, you've had a chance to review the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting as presented.
Moved by Ms. Augbrun, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you Chair Shay. Good evening Members of the Board and to our visitors. We will begin our meeting this evening, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have some students here as guests to lead us in the pledge. The pledge will be followed by a moment of silence, so if you could remain standing after the pledge. All right, to get us started, I will invite Stephanie Williams, the Principal of Donahoe Elementary School, to the podium, who's going to introduce the students who will lead us in the pledge. So if we would please stand as they come forward to be introduced.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce my students from Donahoe. We have Arabella Jones in third grade, we have Justice Lee in fourth grade, we have Epiphany May in fifth grade, Henry Chacon in second grade, Lysen Charity in first grade, and Joy Cridlin in first grade. Go ahead and turn.
Thank you. Pause for a moment of silence, which may be used by those in attendance for a moment of prayer, reflection, or meditation. And that concludes our moment of silence. Thank you again to our students for leading us in the pledge. You may be seated. Our next item is going to be our performance highlight. So the Board and I are going to make our way to the audience so that we can join in in seeing our Mayberry Elementary School guests perform. And Mr. Mosley will come forth to introduce them.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I'm the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. It is my pleasure to introduce this evening for our performance highlight, the Mayberry Elementary School Chorus, under the direction of Mrs. Arda Callahan. Ms. Callahan is in her 17th year of teaching and her fifth year as the music teacher at Mayberry. The Mayberry Chorus will be singing two songs tonight to honor our veterans. During the service song, medley, if you are a veteran, they ask that you please stand so that we may recognize you for your service. Tonight, we have in attendance their proud principal, Mr. Brad Fernal. We ask that you please stand to be recognized at this time. All right, and now, please help me welcome to the stage the Mayberry Elementary School Chorus.
Over hill, over hill, see the eighth and a third church in the case hall for rolling along. In and out of here, the shop, I'm marching right about in the case hall for rolling along. For it's hard on me to feel us in the rain, shout out your number nine soul. And forever you know, you always know that the case hall for rolling along.
You have our past, you always do. You know that we desire you. You have our hearts, we honor you. And here are some red light and blue. Red light and blue. We are a grateful nation. For all you do, for all you serve. You put yourselves right on the line because of you were too big. Your family, I give you, and they deserve our gratitude. All the gratitude. We are a grateful nation. For all you do, for all you serve. We are a grateful nation. For all you do, for all you serve. We are grateful. We are grateful.
And if you would join me for another big round of applause for the students who led us in the pledge and our performers from Mayberry Elementary. Certainly always an outstanding way to start off our board meetings, having students join us. Our next item is going to be to recognize some of our Henrico County Public Schools' personnel who received 2022 Achievement Awards from the National Association of Counties, known as NACO, and the Virginia Association of Counties, known as VACO. So I'll now turn it over for that recognition item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Cashwell. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize five Henrico County School Programs that received 2022 National Association of Counties Achievement Awards. These annual awards recognize groundbreaking county government programs across the nation. In Henrico, the general government and schools earned a total of 21 Achievement Awards. Henrico's 21 awards are the most of any county in Virginia for the 17th consecutive year. HCPS Award Winning Programs include Kids of Promise, Department of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. Here to receive the award on behalf of the department is Nicole Boone, Rich Ashburn, Jenna Conley, Trayvon Robinson, and Courtney Forstman. The Kids of Promise New After-School Pilot Program at Laburnum Elementary School seeks to identify historically underrepresented gifted students, including those from poverty environments and culturally diverse families, and to develop students' potential through enrichment programming. The program also won an award from the Virginia Association of Counties. Communication for All Students and Families, Department of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. Here to accept the award on behalf of the department is Sarah Modrak. This partnership among school, government, nonprofit, business, and faith-based entities enhances communication to meet the needs of our growing population of multilingual residents and those speaking limited English. Thank you, Sarah, and the Department of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. Safety Around the Water Learn to Swim Program. Not surprisingly, Department of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. Here to accept the award on behalf of the department is Mark Brandonberger, Michelle Reynolds, and Walt Atwell. This water safety program brought together HCPS, YMCA of Greater Richmond, and Nova Aquatics with the goal of saving lives through water safety education and swimming instruction. Ninety-eight percent of participating students demonstrate improvement in psychomotor skills and water safety awareness. This program also won an award from the Virginia Association of Counties. Staff Retention, Department of Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity. Dr. Monica Mans is here to accept the award on behalf of this office. The Staff Retention Program uses affinity groups to help support and retain HCPS teachers. Educators in monthly groups, particularly the Black Educators Affinity Group, have gained support, professional development opportunities, and greater opportunities to participate in workshops that promote belonging and identity. Dr. Mans, don't go far. Culturally Responsive Education Model, Office of Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity. The Office of Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity developed and provided division-wide professional learning for a culturally responsive education model, which encourages educators to examine their own cultural awareness. To date, more than 400 principals, assistant principals, content specialists, curriculum writers, school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, and some teachers have completed meaningful professional development using the model. Congratulations to Dr. Mans and to all of the NACO and VACO winners representing these incredible HCPS programs.
Thank you for joining in honoring our VACO and NACO awardees. It's always a moment of immense pride for me, and I know for the Board, to see Henrico County Public Schools teams do so well in that contest, representing truly innovative practices. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Henrico Highlight. This month, we are shining the spotlight on students and staff at Elko Middle School and their recent Catapult into Fall event. Through this school-wide project, students were working in teams to solve a problem. In just a minute, we're going to watch a video that highlights their efforts. And I encourage you, while you're watching the video, to look for the traits of our Henrico learner profile, including critical and creative thinking, communication collaboration, and authentic and connected student-owned learning. Take a look.
Newton's second law, force equals mass times acceleration.
Bond with them together, make sure none of them stick me out.
So I want you to go ahead and build your catapults.
Monday was an exciting day for Elko. We did a whole-school activity called Launch into Fall. We used STEAM principles to allow students to create a catapult, focusing on Newton's three laws of motion.
The way that they built it here is that there are seven popsicle sticks in the middle, and then you have two that are connected by a rubber band, and you put the seven in the middle. So I want you to go ahead and build your catapults. You can follow exactly what they did, or if you want to try something different that you think may work.
You're going to take the seven you made to begin with, and the two that you just did, and you're going to place the seven in the middle. With the two, they'll just form an X shape. So we've already created our X shape. This is our X shape. So you should get this machine.
You want to try it? A pumpkin?
Then, they actually got to launch a pumpkin, since it was Halloween. So they got to launch a pumpkin into a target, and if they didn't, then they got to sort of adjust their catapult a bit to see what they could fix to make it work better.
Or adjusting this a little bit back or forward to see if you can...
It was really exciting that the whole school got to participate. We have over 700 students, and then everyone is excited about just having done the same experience at the same time. So it really gives everybody this common sort of activity to bond. So students got a science lesson while they also got to participate in a fun activity.
I hope you noticed elements of the Henrico learner profile coming to life, and this is happening every day through activities and lessons at each of our schools, and I look forward to sharing more examples with you at future meetings. So as I mentioned, in October, in addition to our instructional highlight each month, we're also going to recognize the adults and young people who lift up our school community through their service, commitment, and valuable contributions. In short, they embody the spirit and the heart of Henrico. So this evening, I'm pleased to recognize the Henrico Christmas Mother, as well as the students and staff who support this incredible community outreach. Let's watch.
Maria Vidal Badri, this year's Christmas Mother.
Buenos noches, como estan? It's my honor to be the first Hispanic Christmas Mother.
Does anybody here speak Spanish? Well, we thank each of you so much and your school.
On behalf of Henrico Christmas Mother Council, thank you so much for the many ways you and your school helped us with the donations you collected last year. This year, as we celebrate our 80th anniversary, we hope to continue that spirit of giving back to our neighbors in need. Your help is instrumental to our mission.
Of neighbors helping neighbors.
And Merry Christmas and Feliz Navidad.
So as the winter holiday season gets into full swing, schools and offices will host events and drives to support the Henrico Christmas Mother. And as a reminder, the program provides resources and holiday gifts to families regardless of their faith or national origin. Watch your school's newsletter and the binder for updates before winter break. Madam Chair, that completes tonight's Henrico Highlight.
Thank you Superintendent. Vice Chair, Kinsella, will you please read our mission statement?
I will, thank you. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. The next item on our agenda is public forum. This is a time when citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given two minutes to address the school board. Speakers will clearly are called, will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up, and may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and the subject of your remarks before speaking. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart beside the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, not the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to the school board clerk. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time to address the school board, there's a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from the chair when your time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during public forum. However, a Henrico staff member will follow up with each speaker. Stakeholders also have the opportunity to provide written comments through an online forum in advance of the meeting. Those comments are shared with the school board members prior to the meeting and posted in board docs. Equal consideration and attention will be given to both written and in-person comments. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing your input. If we can have Speaker Number One.
Good evening. My name is Lucinda Jones. I'm a teacher. I came here tonight to speak to you all. I'm a little nervous. This is my first time, but I do watch you on TV. I came tonight after I was watching CNN a couple of weeks ago about the teacher shortage, and I was really upset because there are a lot of teachers that still love teaching, and I'm one of them. I've been teaching for Henrico County. I started out as a board substitute in 2017, went back to school, and I'm working on my Masters in Special Education. So there are a lot of us out here who enjoy teaching. I come from a family of teachers. But what hurt me the most when I saw that segment on CNN was the fact that the teacher loved teaching, but she could not afford to stay there because she couldn't afford to pay her mortgage, she said. We live in a country where we have housing insecurity, food insecurity, gas insecurity, high inflation. My son just went to VCU this fall, and yet teachers can't afford to pay student loans off. I was just so upset. I was like, I love teaching. I don't want to leave the profession, but yet I can't afford to send my son to college because I don't want to take out a loan. I don't want my son in debt. The Biden administration promised that teachers will get half of our student loans paid off. It's not happening, at least for now. So I'm frustrated. I teach special education, early childhood, and I help out every year. I love teaching. I help out every year for the summer academy. Am I out?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for sharing with us and for being one of our teachers.
Thank you.
Speaker Number Two.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? My name is Henry Haggard. I'm here to talk about English language learners. I'm a senior at Freeman High School, and I'm here today to speak about the future of our English language learners in Henrico County Public Schools. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of Freeman students who tutor English as a second language. I started tutoring in January, when a student named Jose joined my study hall. I showed him around the school, spoke Spanish with him, and taught him English during directed study. He was catching on fast. Eventually, another ELL student joined my English lessons, then another. Currently, the group consists of around a dozen ELL students and three tutors. But even though Jose was learning a lot in the group, he still felt like he didn't belong at Freeman. His classes simply weren't working for him. What I thought would be an opportunity for me to teach Jose new vocabulary eventually became a desperate struggle to keep his grade above an F in classes like Fashion and Design and Woodshop One. It was busy work. All the while, Jose was working from 5:00 to midnight every weeknight, and still he came to school, still he tried. That's more dedication to learning than anyone I know. But he wasn't getting what he needed from school, and no one seemed to be able to offer it to him in any substantial way. This was not due to his work ethic, but his struggles with understanding high-level vocabulary in classes like science and history. Now, I'm a very gifted Spanish speaker, but even I can't translate words like photosynthesis. Jose dropped out in October, not out of apathy or inadequacy, mind you, but out of necessity. But the problem is greater than Jose, as you well know. He is one of many. We, my friends and I, have compiled a list of several solutions that we have implemented at Freeman to help ELL students. It's not perfect, but the ELL problem in our schools will only get worse until something is done about it. We urge the school board to consider these as possibilities for countywide programs, and we sent these solutions in to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I have a moment of personal privilege?
Sure.
Thank you for coming, and what impressive students you are. And you're the reason why we work so hard and why our teachers love teaching, is this is the result. So thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Speaker Number Three.
Good evening. I'm back again. First of all, you all need to get in line with Chesterfield, Hanover, and Richmond Public Schools. They give three minutes. You all give two minutes. I can barely get a complete thought out. The fact that he was able to read all of that in two minutes is impressive, and he shouldn't have to come up here to you all to address the fact that something needs to be done with the ELL students, which is why you all need to adopt the Bill of Rights, because parents, students, and caregivers need to... It needs to be posted in layman's terms on what the rights are for students and parents. I know that you all have it. Still trying to figure out why has it not been implemented yet. Also, I wanted to speak on the fact that the laptop distribution was horrendous, okay? My son goes to Holland Springs High School. He is in ninth grade. He got a laptop the seventh week of school. He has a 504 plan. So what you all did was prioritize seniors and juniors for getting laptops, countywide. So please tell me why. You all thought that that was a good idea. Meanwhile, our freshman students... Meanwhile, our freshman students, which is the biggest class entering in high school, why they didn't have laptops for seven weeks. At least, they didn't have laptops at Holland Springs High School. I had to twist the arm of my son's counselor to get him a laptop. Then on top of that, he got a raggedy old laptop. Now, my two students, my son and my daughter that go to Elko, they have brand-new laptops. Every freshman at Holland Springs has raggedy old laptops. Meanwhile, sophomores, juniors, and seniors have brand-new laptops. Please explain that, because if you all had, you all started the school year early, that was rushed, but you were ill-equipped and you were very unprepared. I bet I won't get an answer on that. You respond to that, but I won't get an answer from you on that, right? You'll just smile at me. You all are doing a disservice to our students, and it is absolutely ridiculous, and it is pathetic, and I should have your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I thank you for coming to speak. I can't speak to the reason for why ninth graders at Holland Springs have older laptops. I have a ninth grader at Glen Allen High School, and just so you know, he has an older laptop too.
Okay, but my son has a 504 plan, and he got a laptop the seventh week of school, and I had to twist the counselor's arm, and she said she's not in direct contact with the technology at the school.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you.
But she's a counselor. That's what her job is.
Thank you, and that concludes our public comment. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Colleagues, we are looking at items 9.01 through 9.12. Are these any items that you would like to separate out from the block? Hearing none, is there a motion on consent items? Colleagues, is there a motion on consent items?
I move that the school board accept, approve, and/or award items 9.01 through item 9.12 on the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Ms. Agburn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kinsella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda items 9.01 through 9.12 have been approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any unfinished business? Oh, excuse me. I, oh, no, that's right. Do you have any unfinished business? All right, hearing none. Colleagues, do you have any new business? Hearing none. The next meeting will be December 8, 2022, here in Newbridge Auditorium, with a work session at 1:00 p.m., followed by a monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m. Meeting times may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is hereby adjourned.